Thank you very much. I'm really sorry.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for your patience.
Yeah.
All right. Good evening. It is Monday, January 3rd. What's today's date?
Six.
January 6th. So, welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on Monday, January 6th. It is 6:08 PM. Kirk, Clark, please call the roll.
Becker.
Here.
O'Flaherty.
Here.
Penya Graham.
Here.
Wright. McMahon.
Here.
Chair Maxwell. Quorum present.
All right, we have a quorum. Thank you very much. At this point in the meeting, I'm going to ask for an approval of the agenda. Can I get an approval for the agenda for the January 6th meeting?
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda as submitted by O'Flaherty. Second?
I second.
We have a second from Penya Graham. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The agenda is approved. At this point in the meeting, I'm going to ask for an approval of the minutes from the December 16th meeting. Can I get an approval of the minutes from the December 16th meeting?
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor from Becker. Second?
I second.
Second from O'Flaherty. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The minutes are accepted. This is the public participation portion of the meeting. This is the part of the floor, the meeting, where I open the floor to anyone wishing to speak of something that is not on the record, on the agenda for tonight. So is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address something that is not on the agenda for tonight? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public participation portion of the meeting and then open up to the new business portion of the meeting. Tonight, what we have on the agenda is a concept plan. This is a request by Donato, Donara Solar for the review of a concept plan for a construction of a four-megawatt ground-mounted solar energy system, a solar field, and a boutique data center on approximately thirty acres along the west side of Peace Road between Greenwood Acres Drive and Challengers Drive. Is there a presentation to be made from the floor? If you could come out up to the podium, state your name and address for the record and give us your presentation.
Good evening. Nick Mahoney here tonight representing Donato Solar. Thanks so much for being here.
You're welcome.
So, yeah, a couple slides. So this is a overview of the proposed location. It's about a thirty-acre plot of land. If you wouldn't mind jumping to the next slide here. This is the proposed solar array. Kind of in the top-hand corner there, you go into bottom, you can see kind of the solar panels. They're facing due south. Along Peace Road there, there's a vegetative barrier. And then there's two, thank you. A joint adjacent to the solar array there, you'll see kind of those two rectangular boxes. It's about two hundred by sixty foot. That represents where the battery system will be. The battery system captures the energy that's being generated by the solar array during the hours where the sun is up. And excess energy that is not being put into the grid is captured there. Further, kind of to the south-west-hand corner there is where the data center is. And that consists of two buildings. They're about twenty feet tall, sixty feet in length, twenty feet in depth. And that is where the data center will be housed. The way that our business model works is we are a developer of these systems, the solar system plus the battery system. We've done about fifty megawatts or so of these facilities throughout Illinois. We're headquartered out of Champaign, and we have locations in Urbana, Bloomington, Lincoln, kind of all over kind of central Illinois, typically within Ameren territory. This is our first project that's this far north here, so we're really excited about that. And, yeah, I'm here to answer any questions. At this point, we're kind of in the concept stage planning. This is, thank you for flipping to this, this is what more or less the proposed buildings would look like. There's very little foot traffic. The data centers are remotely operated. Once they're stood up and kind of running, there's very little people kind of moving in and out of the building to kind of maintain the equipment. It's just routine maintenance in case one of the servers goes down. There will be potentially a bathroom on site, and that was one of the aspects that we had talked about with Dan. Initially, there will be a water line that we'll connect into for a bathroom. If there's any other kind of requirements as part of the planning commission that would be needed there for, you know, servicing water, we would look to incorporate that as well. This is an example of one of our locations in Champaign County. This is on Windsor Road. You can see there, that's a fairly large project. That's about six megawatts. The project that we're proposing here is four megawatts, so, you know, a little bit smaller. This is Oaks Road. This is around a similar size to what we'd be proposing. And you can see kind of central to all of this is the data center as well as the PV array. What's missing from this is the battery system. And the battery system is something that we've kind of been building out as part of our newest projects. And there's lots of benefits to that, and there's no wasted energy. That's any energy that is kind of, during very, very sunny days, our inverters will not be able to capture all of the energy that's being generated by the panels, and a lot of times that energy just goes to waste. It goes nowhere. So what the battery system allows us to be able to do is capture that excess energy and utilize it for putting it back into the grid during the day. And then eventually, kind of throughout a 24/7 period, we will, you know, utilize the majority of it via the data center. So I guess I'll pause there. I kind of gave a very brief overview. I'm happy to talk a little bit more about the concept plan, what we have proposed here. But again, we're kind of at the very preliminary stages of the planning process, so we're very open to, you know, working with the town and making sure that, the city here, and making sure that everything is, you know, up to your standards. Currently, it is not, it's within kind of the zoning jurisdiction, from my understanding, of DeKalb, but it's not within, kind of currently zoned as part of the master plan here. So what we'd be looking for is an annexation and then a rezoning, most likely under industrial. And this concept plan, as we have it, adheres to, you know, the setback requirements under industrial as well as, you know, the coverage acreage and stuff like that. So, pause there.
All right. Thank you, Nick. Is there a staff report to be had?
Yeah, we had a short staff report in the packet. The applicant, Nick, went over very well what they're proposing. So, thirty-acre site at Peace Road and between Greenwood Acres Drive and Challenger Drive. It's not in the city. Would have, if they proceed, it'll have to be annexed and rezoned, planned and approved for it. But it is contiguous to the city. We recommend, the comp plan is, you see there, industrial for the site. Can you see the property there in red outline? And the conceptual plan, which Nick went over, the solar arrays, the battery area, the two data center buildings. It's going to generate to four megawatts, as noted. Project will be behind the meter, meaning the solar energy crater will be metered as it transforms out into the comm ed system, then, of course, used for the data center buildings. The applicant provided a good summary in the background materials, pretty thorough. So if there's any questions on that, we'll certainly take them. We'll take, after this, questions or comments from the public too, people that did come. Correct, there's going to be bathrooms here, so we asked them to hook up to sanitary and water. So that will be extended to the data center buildings, and the plans, kind of hard to see, does show the route of that. They've already talked to their Public Works Department and then KWRD regarding sanitary and where those should be hooked up, a lot of detail on that. So that'll be provided. There is, as noted, fifty-foot setback from property line for a solar farm, solar field, which they meet that, and that's for the arrays, any building, et cetera, except for the transformer lines, of course. Then a hundred-foot setback to any residential areas. There is, of course, residential areas to the, basically, the west back here, the enclave. So they do meet that setback. The arrays will be, was incorrectly noted in the reporter, in their summary, it'd be twenty feet high. The arrays, I understand, will be eight feet high at their highest point. The max in the UDO is fifteen feet, so they'll be within the max height for the solar arrays. So if they choose to go forward, they'll have to petition to annex. There'll be another public hearing where any resident, property owner within two hundred and fifty feet, like tonight, would be notified of the hearing. They have to submit a rezoning petition with, and then a more detailed plan with that. Likely to rezonate to PDI Plan Development Industrial District, which we did the Route 38 solar farm. We approved a few months back on the west side of town. And also similar to the solar farm that exists down at Gerla Road in the far southwest side of the city. And industrial too, which solar farm, as you probably know, will be built on city property near the airport and Pleasant Street starting this year. So again, the concept plan is just, there's no official motion needed by the commission. Just your feedback to the applicant regarding any comments, you know, if you think it should proceed or make changes to it. That's what we're kind of looking for tonight, so.
Sounds good.
But, you know, certainly, Chair, if you want to have anybody from the public come up, it's not a hearing, but we'll take any, if anybody has any questions or comments, we'll certainly have those.
All right. Thank you for that presentation, Dan. So this is not a public hearing, but we're going to conduct it as if it is. So if there's anybody from the public that wants to ask questions or speak about this, I would invite you to just come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Please keep your public participation to three minutes and go from there. So does anybody want to speak? We have one. All right.
Hi, Eric Kristoff, 1496 Cambria, number five. And Nick, thank you for the, if that's okay. Good presentation. Thank you. My questions are about the data center dimension of it. Any kind of, it'd be interesting to know the details or whatever you're able to share in terms of the type of workload and the tenants, because data centers are often loud and use a lot of water for cooling. So that would be, that would be one area that I would want to make sure is addressed. And then second would be if the hundred-foot setback is good, but if there are any, if there could be like consideration of like as part of the development to make sure that there's increased foliage, like tree lines or something like that, put in, you know, just to, you know, kind of both for sound abatement potentially as well as just make it a little prettier for the homes that are along there. Those would be the two main.
Those things are okay.
Concerns. Thank you.
Do you want to respond?
Want to address, Nick?
So, yeah, thank you for your comments. So regarding the data center aspect, they will not be water-cooled. So there won't be kind of a draw on the water supply. The data centers that we have here are probably, you know, I think data centers is kind of a broad concept, right? There's lots of different data centers, like DeKalb just had a massive one approved here, right? That is a completely different animal compared to what we're talking about here. These are, these are small. They're modular. They don't really make much noise at all. They're air-cooled. You know, we don't really deal with the data center side of it. Our customers deal with that, so we lease out the space to them. But that's kind of the way that we design the buildings. There's, you know, very minimal, you know, noise pollution. There's, there's not really like a, any detriment really to the community in the surrounding areas. We did put a vegetation barrier, kind of along Peace Road. One thing that I kind of had made note of to the engineer was to put one kind of along the residential side as well, which I think would be really nice. And that's typical. We do that for most, you know, communities when we build, you know, solar arrays there. And then one other question that we do get is sometimes is around the noise related to the solar aspect themselves. And we've done countless numbers of noise analysis studies where we have to hire these professional engineers to come in that specialize in noise analysis, and they, you know, they'll, they'll go in and they'll document exactly what the expected impact. And more often than not, especially on a busy road like this, the, the noise of the cars is louder than the noise of the inverters in the data centers. So that's, that's pretty typical here. But, yeah, I appreciate your question. And, yeah, happy to talk more about it if you still have questions.
And even pricing for the area, there's a pretty good tree line between the site and the enclave back here. But certainly any additional landscaping to help keep any type of noise down. And two, yeah, you mentioned Peace Road. We'd probably be looking for, since that's on Peace Road, similarly did the Route 38 solar farm. If they do proceed, probably require a little bit more. We'd have some minimal landscape standards required, but probably ask for a little bit more along Peace Road, and they've agreed to that.
Yep. Yep.
All right. All right. Thank you, Nick, for responding. Thank you, Eric, for the question. Someone else come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Johnson Cuny, and I'm at 1504 Cambria Drive, Unit 6. I just had some questions about, well, what kind of batteries would be present in this battery situation? Because I know there's battery technologies evolving right now, and we're sort of between what the best batteries are out there. So I'd want to know, you know, if you're going to go with lithium or you're going to go with an older model of battery. And I'm also wondering for the data center, what sort of fire suppression system you would have? I know sometimes those use chemical fire suppression or CO2 fire suppression, so I'm just wondering about that. And then you already addressed my questions about the tree line, so thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth. So, so the batteries are, they're LFP batteries, so lithium-ion phosphate. That's like kind of the leading category, although, to your point, that is an evolving field. There's lots of new battery technologies that are kind of constantly being released. But these ones in particular are the most stable and have fairly high energy density. The reason why you don't see them in cars is because they're quite a bit heavier. So, well, because they're not moving around, we don't have to expend energy to move these batteries only one time, which is an expensive process to do that. But once we get them there, they're there. But they're all, you know, kind of on the fire suppression because it is important. All of these batteries are actually individually rated to, I don't remember the exact term, but it's all under kind of the International Fire Code standard. And these batteries, the way that they're built is it's actually kind of a bunch of smaller batteries kind of coupled together. And each one of those batteries, when they, when they run a test on it, they, they can, they run a test. So if one of those batteries were to have an issue, so say it were to catch fire, would it spread to the other batteries? And all of the battery systems, in order for them to be approved, in order for us to even look at them, they have to pass that code. So they're all self-contained. They're all, you know, fireproof in that sense. There's very little risk of that actually happening. On top of that, we also have a very, very robust O and M package, so operations and maintenance that we come out and do. So all of these batteries are under warranty for ten years by the manufacturer. They come out and they're constantly doing maintenance on them, checking everything. They, they come out about three, four times a year. Same thing on the solar side. And then on the data center side, yeah, there are two different ways you could do it. You could have a water-based fire suppression. You could have a chemical-based fire suppression. I don't know if, I don't know exactly if we've made the decision on that point yet. Because we're going to have water here, we probably will go water-based fire suppression, so like a sprinkler. But, you know, they're not very flame, flammable in that sense. It's, it's mostly, you know, just computer parts, so. But, yeah. Did I answer your questions?
And the city, of course, annex the city without the file of our latest building and fire codes, which we just recently updated. Have the most recent international codes updated, so.
Okay, very good. Good. Anybody else from the public? All right. Come on up to the podium. State your name and address for the record, please.
I am Dawn Gavin. I live at 1480 Cambria, Unit 6. And I just wondered how long a project like this would take. Was one of the questions. And then the other, they did some kind of clearing out over the summer, and we've only lived there for four years, but this is the first winter that we've had a problem, a real problem with mice. So we're just also kind of wondering how much more we can look forward to next winter. If, if and when, or whatever winter, if and when this takes place, though. Those were my two main questions, because the rest you've answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. So, yeah, so on the construction timeline, the, the beauty of kind of the solar system is it's a very, very quick installation process. This site in particular is already, you know, is an agricultural site, so it's relatively flat. We don't really have much clearing or anything like that to do. You know, we will basically come in, within, you know, one month, the site will be prepped. We'll start staging our material. The actual post-pounding process, which is kind of the racks that hold the panels themselves, that process takes about two months, sometimes less. It's pretty, pretty cool. They have a machine that goes around and is able to do it relatively quickly. And then, you know, after that, we have some concrete work we have to do to create the pads for the batteries as well as for the buildings. But the buildings themselves are tilt-up buildings. They're kind of pole barn type style, so they're relatively minimal. So kind of all in, if we're, if we're moving really, really quickly, it's, you know, six to nine months. The slow part, and we'll, because this is our first project in, in comm ed territory, is usually on the utility side. They're the ones that drag their feet, and I'm sure you guys can appreciate that. They, you know, they'll take a long time to come in and actually energize our system. So sometimes we'll have our projects done for eight to 12 months, and they'll just be sitting there, not generating any power, no power going to the grid, not powering any homes or anything like that. And they'll just sit there. So there's that aspect. And then on the mice side, that's, that's, I just had a mouse eat through one of my car wires, and all of my lights went out on my car, so I can empathize with that, yeah. But we actually, we partner with Pheasants Forever, which is a, kind of, they're, they're based like, I think, all throughout central Illinois, but they essentially generate a seed mix that we plant underneath our solar fields. And what's special about the seed mix is it only grows to be about 12 to 18 inches high, which means it sits right below kind of the panels, which means we don't have to go in there and mow it, which is what just agitates the mice and requires them, you know, to go running because, you know, their homes are disturbed. So, you know, I can't promise the first year, right, it's going to be like fully, you know, up and, but by like the second or third year, we have really, really nice, and you can kind of, yeah, thank you, Dan. You can kind of see there, like, there's the vegetation that's kind of underneath the panels there, starting to grow and starting to fill in. And what's really nice about that too is a lot of times, you know, the farmland that's there is, every year it's getting tilled up, and there's a lot of dust that's being created, and, and, you know, there's, there's that process of, of, you know, cycling through the different crops. Once we put the solar panels in and we put the, you know, the vegetation layer down, that doesn't change for a long time, and it actually helps to rejuvenate the strength of the soil. There's a lot of benefits for the wildlife that's there. So, you know, it's kind of a net positive in some regards for the soil, because it's not constantly being disturbed, and you're, you're not losing a topsoil layer every year, so.
I do have a couple others. Can the journey to come back up with some?
Yeah, come on up to the podium, please. Broadcast away so people can hear you at home.
Okay. So also, you mentioned Lincoln. Is that right off of 55 there?
Yes.
Okay. I've, because I've seen that one. My, I'm originally from Springfield, so I pass that one a lot. So I remember when it kind of popped up and you mentioned that. So that is one of yours there, Lincoln.
Is that the one that's right?
It's off of 55, Interstate 55, right? Lincoln is between Springfield and Bloomington, closer to Springfield, but about thirty miles outside of Springfield.
Okay, yeah. No, I do know where Lincoln is. I'm wondering the intersection, because we have, I think we have two projects there, so.
Okay. The intersection.
The 1250th, that we're just starting, which is Nicholson.
I'm not sure about that. I'm not that familiar with Lincoln, just the stretch between Springfield and Bloomington.
Could have been us. Could have been us. There's a lot of solar projects.
Okay. And then that is good to know about the, the extra vegetation. That will be helpful for the, we have deer and other things that roam around, so.
Yeah.
It's kind of nice. Take care. We've even seen wild turkeys.
No other questions there? All right. Is there anybody else from the public that has questions, comments, would like to address? Okay. Well, seeing none, this is not a public hearing, so I don't have to close the public hearing. At this point, seeing no more questions, comments from the gallery, how about the commission? I'm going to open it up to the commission for questions for the city or for Nick about this project. Anybody?
Go ahead. Most of my questions were, were answered. I guess the only other thing is, I know on some of the other solar farm project things that we've approved, there was a, like a date, like it was a twenty-year project or something like that. Is this something like that where after twenty years you'll probably reassess or?
I guess you're asking if they're going to lease it, or?
Yeah.
How long?
Is it leased, or are you guys buying?
So, so, so we own the land.
Okay.
And we will own the solar array.
Okay.
The panels are rated for about twenty-five years.
Okay.
Batteries, about half that. So at least twenty-five years, but one of the things that we typically do is we, we generate like a decommissioning plan.
I guess that's.
As you know.
Which is probably what you're thinking about, yeah.
Yes.
And so what that does is, it basically gives you some assurances where, you know, if, when the project is coming and approaching end of life, there's some financial guarantee and security around that we're going to not just leave a thirty-acre field of panels that don't work anymore, you know, we, you know, so that's kind of what that is for, and it's very detailed, we have kind of professionals pull that together, and they'll generate that whole thing, so.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I think I was thinking of.
Yeah.
Okay.
So when you come back, there'll be a decommissioning plan submitted with this?
Yeah, that's required in the UDO, either have that or be required to have that submitted prior to starting any work on this site.
Very good.
Yeah.
Okay. I had one question, I think it might have already been addressed, though, because we talked about the twenty feet maximum. So these, these pillars, these panels are ninety inches, so about seven and a half feet wide or long?
Yep.
And then they're going to be mounted up, so how, how high are they mounted off the ground?
Yeah, so kind of at the, at the base of the slope, it's about eighteen inches, and at the top of the slope, it's about nine feet, so.
About nine feet.
Kind of that, that angle, whatever that.
No, I think that was with regard to the, the outbuildings, to the, to the data center buildings, those could be up to twenty feet, wasn't that?
Yeah, I think, I believe the data center buildings are right at twenty feet.
Yeah, it wasn't the panels.
The panels are only nine, and that's at a twelve-and-a-half percent grade, that's kind of the angle that they're positioned at.
So what was on here that you're going to have to ask for a variance for?
Well, that's, yeah, the report, I mentioned that it was incorrect in their summary, it's up to twenty feet, no higher than twenty, a max, and the UDO is fifteen, but they did indicate, another person with the company noted the max height would be eight feet, eight or nine feet, it sounds like, so.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, just to help me understand this, I'm looking at this picture here. So the, the meshed areas, those are all the arrays that are going to go back and forth, and they're going to be at max height of nine, eight, nine feet. Those two big things next to the arrays, those are the batteries?
Yeah, it's, it's not exactly how they look, so, you know, it's not like it's a huge battery that's dropped in, it's, it's actually kind of a couple smaller containers of batteries, more or less. And, yeah, the way that that works is, you know, the containers are shipped in, batteries are shipped in separately, and then the containers are filled with the batteries and hooked up to the solar array.
And then, and how tall are those batteries, how?
That's a good question, I, I, they're not any taller than eight feet, that they're, you know.
So if I'm driving by from Peace Road or Greenwood Acres, I'm going to see the panels, but I'm not going to necessarily see so much those two panels.
No, I, I don't, I mean, maybe if you have the right angle, you might see it, but, yeah, from the, if you're driving down Peace Road, you would not see any sort of battery system.
Then the, the two buildings behind, those are the data centers?
Correct.
Okay. And then this, looking through the plan that you submitted, I mean, is, was it, is this because this is just a concept plan? It looks like the dimensions you have listed on that plan there are like sixty-by-one-hundred feet buildings there.
Yes.
And the buildings I see are different dimensions, is, am I looking at the right thing, it's just that?
I, yeah, that was kind of like a concept plan, so we don't have our final stamp.
So the final plan will be?
Yeah, our final plan will, and, you know, we're open to kind of, you know, adjusting those buildings, and, you know, in any way that we need to, but, you know, one thing that I don't believe is in those plans that you were looking at either, were the, kind of the incorporation of the bathrooms as well, so those things will be included in there.
So the bathrooms, is that going to be inside one of the buildings, or is that going to be a standalone building someplace else, or?
We'll include it probably in one of the buildings, I would imagine.
Okay. And I think you've answered this from your, like, people generally, these data centers, it's not, it's not like, you know, Facebook built these data centers and there's fifty, a hundred people working there.
Right.
There's not going to be people working there, is there?
No, other than, you know, routine maintenance, you know, once, maybe twice a month, they're, they're fairly standalone data centers. Sometimes, yeah, you'll, you'll need to check on one of the servers or something like that, but, yeah.
Okay. You've answered my questions.
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to reinforce is that as you provide a buffer between that and the residents, that it's a nice enough one that it doesn't, you know, impede the pleasure of living at their home without having to look at an industrial site.
Absolutely.
But I'm sure that'll be a part of your, your final plan.
Yeah, and we have, you know, I, I guess, Dan, with the vegetative buffer, would we be able to put that inside kind of the setback area?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
The setbacks for solar arrays, any building, but landscaping obviously could be within there.
Within there, okay, perfect, yeah.
How is landscaping impacted by solar panels? I know they do generate a little bit of heat, but are they, are they difficult, I mean, is vegetation difficult to maintain?
Not, not that I know of, I've, I've never, they, they really don't generate all that much heat. I mean, yeah, there's, there's not really any negative, there's actually a lot of companies out there now that are, that are growing food under solar panels, solar panel arrays, called agrivoltaics, which, you know, they'll put the solar panels up kind of a pie, and then they'll grow corn or whatever may be underneath, but we're not doing that here, but I don't, I don't believe there's really any impact on the vegetation. If anything, really, it, it strengthens it, kind of on my point earlier, where, you know, every year you're kind of tearing up the topsoil, disturbing the land, right? This actually, the, you know, the grass that grows kind of has roots, goes deep, retains more moisture, you know, kind of in the soil, you know, can help, help the, you know, the surrounding wildlife landscape do better as well.
All right. All right, thank you. Anything else? All right, well, this has been very informative, I appreciate your coming, this is just, no official action is going to be taken tonight, we're going to do is we're going to, you know, look at this, people have heard about it there, people can, now they know how to reach out to you and contact you with questions, and you know how to find us. Is that all we have to do for this, Dan?
Yep, there's no official, it sounds like a.
Appreciate it.
Proceed, so, yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And once they do, there'll be an official public hearing notice sent to the residents within two-hundred-and-fifty feet, the same ones who got them, regarding a hearing date here in this room, so.
All right. All right, then we'll move on to the next part of the meeting, and that is reports. Do you have any staff reports for us, Dan?
Yeah, just next meeting, twenty-first, that's a Tuesday because of the holiday, so just one hearing scheduled this time, twenty-fiftieth, East Lincoln Highway, it's for an auto sales there. So that's all we have on that agenda this time, and Happy New Year to everybody.
All right.
That's all I had, thanks.
That's all you got, okay. Anything from the commissioners? Anything to report?
No.
All right, well, Happy New Year, everybody. At this point of the meeting, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Becker has motioned that we adjourn, is there a second?
I second.
Penya Graham seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Very nice. Thank you, everybody.
It's really interesting. Can you read me out of this?
It's all me.